Good evening. I'd like to call to order the March 16, 2011, open budget hearing for the Milton Public Schools. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to our open budget hearing. I'm just going to really review the process that we took to get to this point tonight, and then if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak at that time, you'll be welcome to come forward. We're not going to do a formal presentation tonight, as we've already made that presentation several times here at school committee meetings which have been televised. We've also gone to five of the six PTO meetings of all but the high school. A copy of our budget is currently in the Milton Public Library, as well as the Pierce and High School libraries. All of our documents are available on our website, miltonps.org. And so that's the factual piece of it. I'll just walk you through the process a little bit. So, we presented to the warrant committee, we had a joint meeting of the school committee and the warrant committee, to determine what our budget would be. There are two important points that the public needs to understand in this budget process. There's a level dollar amount, and that is when the system is given the actual same dollar that we have this year, and that would be pushed forward to next year. And a level service amount, which is the money that we're given to move, take the school system as it is right now and move it forward to next year. The difference between those two dollar numbers is approximately $1.5 million. The administration, the finance subcommittee, and the school committee prepared and voted on those budgets, and prepared a cut list to reach that $1.5 million difference. We then attended a full-day warrant committee meeting, which was televised, and at which time we received, we were given from the warrant committee, an additional $637,000 over our level dollar budget amount. And that allowed us to restore some positions. I'll read those positions now. We have a total of a .1 full-time equivalent occupational therapist, speech therapist, and physical therapist. We reinstituted $50,000 in text materials, supplies, and technology to our budget. We added back $50,000 to a reduction in school years, building subs for next year. We reinstituted the full-time nurses at Cunningham and Collicott School. We went back to the original preschool status, the way it was prior to our reorganization, so there'll be no changes to that. A full-time English reading teacher and French reading teacher, those are support positions, were put back into the budget and the district for next year. We added back in a Milton High School science teacher, a Milton High School Spanish teacher, a .2 Milton High School elective, which is to be determined based on the enrollment and the requests from students for classes for next year. We added back in .7 of teacher aides for the preschool reorganization. And we also added back in a .2 Pierce Middle School elective, similar to the one at the high school, and a Pierce Middle School teacher to be determined, and a math teacher. And that equaled a total of 8.7 full-time equivalent teachers, staff members, and instructional supports that were added back into our budget, in thanks to that $637,000 that the warrant committee allotted us. We still have an additional $863,000 in cuts for next year. So, I'd like to thank Mary Gormley and her leadership team for all of their help and guidance in this process. I'd like to thank the finance subcommittee meetings members, I'm sorry, Mary Kelly, Glenn Pavlichek, and Dennis Cohane, for the many hours that they spent here on Monday mornings, meeting and pouring over these dollars and budgets. I'd also like to thank the parents and community members who took the time to call us or email us to voice their concerns, or also offer suggestions in terms of the budget proposals that we had received. So, it's a long process that began way back in, it feels like the end of October, the beginning of November, I believe, and brings us here tonight. Obviously, this is not a finished product, because town meeting will happen in the beginning of May, and that's when the budgets will be voted. But this is an opportunity tonight for members of the community to come and speak to us and voice their opinions, concerns, any expressions there might be. We have heard a lot from people by going out to the PTO meetings, and that's been a really wonderful experience. It's been a great opportunity to open dialogue, and as I said, people have called and emailed with their thoughts and ideas, too. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Yes, thank you. Come right up to the table and just give your name and address, please. Thank you for coming.
My name is Kathleen Pito.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
My name is Kathleen Pito. I've been in the school system nine years. I have a 14-year-old and 11-year-old, she's in fifth grade. My 14-year-old is in private school at the moment. And the reason I want to speak is, I don't know if people are, well, you guys are aware, I don't know how many of the parents are aware, but there's some talk about perhaps only one librarian at the elementary level. I don't know how far along it is. I've sent emails, I guess, hopefully, to most of you on the committee. I've worked in the library for eight years. I helped pack up the Collicott School when it went to the 1909 building. I unpacked it, I worked on the cataloging, I helped cover the books, order new books. I'm really concerned that if there's one librarian for the four schools, the library will just basically fall apart. It's a full-time job for four or five volunteers, just keeping up with the effort. Never mind the librarian, going in, guaranteeing that the books are all in order, teaching the kids lessons. I mean, and it's not just, the problem is, I think, a lot of people don't spend much time in the library. I said something to a parent, and they said, "So what? It's just taking out a book, isn't it?" But it's not. It's not just taking out a book. Mr. Coben, I worked with Teri for a long time, Teri Deutsch, and she was wonderful, she retired. Josh is fabulous. I have never seen anyone more dedicated to getting the kids to read than him. He's bringing a whole new genres of books, to make sure that he gets those children who are reluctant readers. He has these graphic novels, that are now the big thing. But he's teaching them poetry, there's only half an hour a day, so there's a half an hour once a week. There's a lot of things he tries to get done. He's got, he's working on getting ebooks onto the computer. They all now know how to do searches, or he's teaching them how to do computer searches. They're being exposed to different types of books they wouldn't before. You know, if you go to the public library, you pick something that you want to see. He actually points them out and says, "Maybe you'd like to see this, maybe you'd like to see that." The PTO actually funds a lot of the new books he gets, and they're always the better quality of books. As I said, the things that kids want to read. Kids will stand in line quietly to bring in their books, so that they can get three books out. And I know, so there's a number of things. One, it's just making sure the children are exposed to books, because we have a fabulous, fabulous collection of books for the younger children. And then, even as you grow up, I mean, you can get books in there that you could probably find in here, because there are some kids, even in third grade, that are reading at fifth and sixth grade levels. So, the exposure to the books are one thing. The upkeep of the whole collection, I think, is really important. If you have one librarian going around to four schools, they don't have time to do that. They really cannot chase down lost books, they can't add to the collection. The books are pretty beat up, too. So, we're always trying to get things. I actually get books that the public library discards and recycles them, it are books, because sometimes it's a little pitiful. But I know some people have said, "Well, we've just spent a lot of money at the public library." And that's true, and it's great, but it doesn't have the collection. And I don't know how many kids, it would be an interesting study to see how many of the children actually make it to that library. My daughter doesn't actually take books out from the public library, because frequently they're not in. One time she had to wait a month for a book. Try and tell the 10-year-old child that they have to wait a month for a book. I ended up having to go and buy a book. So, it worked out well, because I donated it to Collicott afterwards. It's a lot of series there donated by me. But I think it's really important to keep that aspect of the education. It's not just getting a book. It's being exposed to everything. It's learning the Dewey Decimal System. It's getting everything, as I said. And a lot of the kids, once they get to high, I guess, high school, and I don't even know if middle school, does middle school actually get a library time? Do they know?
Yes.
I don't know, do they?
They book the library.
Yes, classes do.
They do? That's good. So, but it, if, again, if you don't actually know and get excited about getting books, and the kids are really excited about that. And I think it's important to keep that up. But on top of it, our, the Milton Foundation for Education has spent a lot of money getting the computer systems online, keeping up the library. And now to just say, "Well, it's not as important as some of the other aspects of the school," I think is sort of sending a message, too, that we sort of shift depending on what some people think is more important than others. And I'm not saying you, but a lot, as I said, unfortunately, a lot of people aren't aware of how important the library is. And as I said, how many people volunteered to make it, I'm sure you've had meetings there when you came to Collicott. It's beautiful. That's not done by, even the librarian, he doesn't have much time, or she in the afternoon, doesn't have time to put it down. It's a community thing, to keep the library going. So, I don't know. As I said, I've been doing it for eight years. People joked, when Teri left, they said that I should become the librarian. I said, "No, no, too much." But it's my last year, and I just want to make sure that it doesn't get forgotten along the way.
We appreciate your comments. We, you know, as I said, this isn't a done deal, and we have received your email, and we, you know, certainly, many of us would put that at the top of the list. It's just, it's very, it's a process. And it's weighing out, you know, where the most critical cuts can be, can be put back in. So, I wouldn't say that this is a done deal, and, you know, it's still a work in progress, and...
No, I mean, certainly, I'd choose a nurse over a librarian any day. But I just don't want it to fall between the cracks, if people just think, "Well, it's only a book."
And it's important for you to say it in a public forum, so people can hear it as well. So, thank you for coming forward, and thank you for all your volunteer time as well.
Oh, yeah, well...
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the open budget hearing? Seeing no one, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our open budget meeting and move into our regular school committee meeting. So, we have a motion from Mr. Huban, we have a second from Mr. Pavlichek. Mrs. Kelly?
Just a question. I have a question about the subject raised before we close the session, if possible?
Certainly. Yep, I didn't see you raising your hand, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you.
So, I just wanted to get clarity, because the librarian is not on any cut list that we presently have. It is, has been mentioned as part of a swap for time, to put more time into art. And so, I think, number one, I want to make that distinction. But number two, if this is an issue that we believe needs to be revisited, that we, you know, come up with proposals. I don't know whether it would mean swapping out some of this, but, you know, I think that we probably should put it back on the table and revisit it.
So, Ms. Pito came and met with me, and then I encouraged her to communicate with the school committee, and I'm glad, on her own initiative, she came tonight. And when we, with the elementary staff, have finished the first grade assignments, that we'll report on later, we're now going into the assignments of teachers for next year and looking into the scheduling. And when we, to Ms. Kelly's point, and I explained to Kathleen, we're looking to increase the art, the issue that was on the table was to have the formal library periods every other week, but then every week to use some kind of form of an instructional aid, so that the students could continue to return their books. Kathleen, as, and as I explained, every time somebody comes forward with an issue, we look at the cuts, we hear from, we don't have these public meetings without listening to the public, or you wouldn't have a public meeting if you didn't want parent input. And I emailed Kathleen that it's all still being examined at the elementary level. Does that answer your question, Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
So, it's still being looked at and examined, and no decisions have been made. I appreciate you coming forward, though, on behalf of the librarians, I appreciate all your time.
Any further discussion about the open budget hearing? So, we will, all in favor of adjourning from the meeting? Thank you, it's unanimous. And we will move in, I'll call to order our regular school committee meeting. Could we please, does anyone have any additions or corrections to our agenda this evening? I have just a few. Under the superintendent's report, we're going to get an enrollment update and receive the most current enrollment chart as of today's date. And under finance subcommittee report, we need to add the revised management letter and the fiscal year 12 proposed budget reduction restoration, reduction/restoration summary. Those are my notes I have. Anything else? Okay. Hearing none, we'll just accept this agenda. And I don't see anyone for citizens to speak, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the February 9, 2011, not the February 2, the February 9, 2011, school committee meeting minutes. That was moved by Mrs. Kelly, was it? Sorry. And seconded by Mr. Huban. Were there any discussions? Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. And we'll move into the superintendent's report, Ms. Gormley.
Tonight, at the committee's suggestion, we've had topics on the agenda for our March 30 meeting, and we moved them to this meeting, really. So, first, I'd like to ask up Bob Patterson, and our technology director, for his presentation. Welcome, Bob. And we've copied the presentation for the committee and the individuals in the audience. The presentation is in your folders, their folders for everyone. And I've asked the committee to forward any questions or issues they wanted, covered by the two presentations that were going to be given tonight. So, the questions you've sent in have been incorporated into Bob's presentation.
Hello, everyone. Bob Patterson, I'm the IT director, and I'm just going to give you a brief rundown...
Can you speak right into the microphone, please?
Is that better? I'm just going to give you a brief rundown on who we are, what we do, and where we stand in the world of technology in the schools. So, the department itself is myself, and Joe Thomas, and Julius Ramirez. And it's, you know, a fairly small staff for, we have, this is what we do. We have about 1,200 computers in the system, 139 printers, 136 smart boards, 167 LCD projectors, about 550 email addresses for the staff, plus, you know, a dozen servers that house all the applications that handle everything from food service to student information systems. And we also have to make sure that our student information system properly feeds, it's the linchpin to all the other data for all the other systems, whether it's, you know, library software, the Alert Now system, food service, all of those systems all get fed from the student information system, which takes a bit of work to make sure that it all happens correctly. We also, we have to manage the, our internet connection, which can be challenging at times with our, the speed of our connection. And, let's see. Oh, also, I'm sorry.
I have a good question. On the bottom of the third column, what is Sam and Tom?
Sam and Tom, it's a software program that the computer teachers here at the high school, they use to gauge the students' proficiency with Microsoft Office products. They, it's, it's actually pretty interesting. It looks just like the software itself, and the tests, it's actually pretty interactive. You have to, you can click and drag, you can, if you need to bold something, you bold it, and it, it knows. It's not just, you know, check off A for correct. It's a pretty comprehensive software for really gauging someone's knowledge of Office products.
Thank you.
Also, the guidance, guidance software as well, antivirus software, and all, and of course, all of the network switches and all of the closets throughout the building. There's about 94 different switches. And then, let's see, the next one. This year, this is where our money was spent, and in red, you can see that the majority of it, over $101,000, is basically recurring costs, software updates, maintenance contracts, all kind of necessary costs that we have to, that we have to pay for before we ever get to make any improvements. So, this year, we also bought about 92 computers to replace a few labs, and replaced a few printers. But, you know, after the computers and the recurring costs, there's not a lot to spend on really progressing and helping us improve. Let's see. And then also, I included in your packet a report from the state, the most recent one, which was last April, about the recommendations from the state for tech ed recommendations. And we actually stack up pretty well in most areas, and some we need, we'd still need some support in. For instance, technology integration, they recommend one full-time staff person for every 80 teachers. And we really only have a fraction of one person for the elementary schools. We're very good, and we have been for a few years, for the computer to student ratio. We're better than 3.6 to 1. For our PC replacement policy, yes, our policy is five years, but in reality, we really don't have the budget to replace 20% of the machines every year. So, it ends up being close to seven-year turnaround on the computers. As far as technical support goes, they recommend one full-time employee per 200 computers. We have two full-time employees for 1,200 computers. This is, the next two are actually new this year. They are now, they are now including digital projectors and interactive whiteboards, both of which we're doing very well in comparison to the recommendations and to the rest of the state. We're way above recommendations. Our internet connection speed, right now, they recommend 100 megabits per 1,000 students. Currently, we have 10 megabits for about 3,800 students, which is, which is not very good. But it's, the reason they recommend such a high bandwidth is because so much of the content that the teachers use, all the tools, it's all interactive, it's all streaming video. And we end up, with our filtering, we end up blocking a lot of sites, especially YouTube and other sites that stream video, because it's just, it's a bandwidth hog, and it clogs the network for everybody. But I've actually just made a deal with our provider, Merrimack Education Center. We're increasing our bandwidth by 10 times to 100 megabits, and we're also decreasing the cost by $10,000 per year. So, that's a big jump. And then hopefully, we'll...
Next year, Bob?
I'm sorry?
That's for next school year, or is it...
Well, no, we're, it's hopefully going to be installed next month.
Great.
And that will continue next year. And hopefully, I'll have to test, but we'll be able to open up some of the sites that we've had to block and monitor the bandwidth. They recommend one IT director, here I am, and they recommend a network administrator, I guess that's me, too. And, you know, over the last few years, we did lose the network administrator when Mike Good was retired and I moved up, and we also lost a PC technician a few years ago, which has been, it's been rough, because with three, it seems, it was, it was almost even, we could split their time between schools. But with two, it's become kind of a rat race, and they just go wherever they're needed. And now, it's just, because we did so well with the building project, and everything was fairly new, now it's getting to the point where there's more and more maintenance needed, and the technicians are really running around all the time. And then, for next year, the priorities, we've talked about in detail with John Phelan, Mary Gormley, and some of the coordinators, we'd really like to get some more smart boards into the classrooms, and also, not just the boards themselves, but the professional development to go along with it. Because the boards are great, but if the teachers don't know how to use them, it's just, it's just another appliance on the wall.
But to speak to that point, Bob, the professional development that's associated with any teacher who has a smart board placed, you commented how successful that professional development has been.
Oh, it is, absolutely. And like Greg Forge's class has been great, and, you know, the teachers that have the boards, they really just, they're much more excited about the content, and the students seem more involved and, you know, excited about just a new way to get the content, rather than just being lectured to, or having to read out of a book. We'd really also like to increase the bandwidth even more than just the 100 megs. Because again, it's, the content on the internet is not going away, it's only gonna, become more and more prevalent, you know, the books, there's, pretty soon, I know, sorry, the library, pretty soon, there's going to be just more and more books online, not just, you know, and it ends up being cheaper than buying all the textbooks, and it all takes bandwidth. And that's what, you know, we'd like to increase even more. Also, continue to replace the aging computers next year, even more than we did this year, to get to that five-year replacement cycle, because it just compounds every year that we don't replace 20%. It gets worse and worse every year. We have to replace a few aging servers that we've had since the start of the building project. They're at their end of life, they need to go. And also, really like to get an automated inventory control software that would, that would just make our lives a lot easier, because a lot of times, there's a lot of shifting every summer, computers, we, they get handed down to other classrooms, other, from high school to maybe middle school or elementary. And it's pretty difficult to physically keep track of every single one, where they go. And an automated software would just make it very, very easy, and I could take a snapshot at any time, anybody asks me a question, what we have, where is it, I would know instantly, rather than having to get back to somebody. And then the last one. And then, in addition to the normal budget next year, which again, would be all the recurring costs, hopefully buying approximately 100 computers, you know, this is a wish list. We'd like about, you know, 30 smart boards to distribute across the district, which would be great. If we were to purchase 148 more PCs, that would get us to the 20% replacement cycle for the next year. The servers, replacing three of them. And the internet bandwidth, I'd love to bump it up to 300 megs. And if we did that, we would also need another firewall. And then, server virtualization, it's a way of consolidating multiple servers, and it saves money, and it also can make use of some of our older equipment to make it last even longer. And it also can make use of some of our older equipment to make it last even longer. And that's about it.
And that total is two hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Right.
Do you want to talk about the other supplement pieces you put in the packet? Tech plan?
Oh, I, yes, I also included the, the tech plan, which goes through two thousand and thirteen. And I also included the report from the state on the tech ed recommendations. And I also included the smart board inventory by school and a summary as well.
Mrs. Kelly?
So I just have a couple of questions on the presentation. The first is, so what, what age, how old is the oldest computer that we have? Which would probably be located at the elementary, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say the oldest one is probably eight years.
Eight years.
Yes. Some of, yes, some of them are still sticking around that predate the building project.
And you talked about sort of the staffing. So what are the implication, you know, what are the ramifications of being understaffed from a, from at least against standard recommendations for technicians? So if you could give us just a couple of examples of, so what does that translate into in the life of, you know, someone using technology?
Well, I think the biggest problem is, you know, the teachers have a hundred and eighty days to work with these kids. And, you know, every second that something is not right or not working for them, it's a big, it's a big problem because of the limited time they have. And if they, if they have to wait a day or two to have a problem looked at and then resolved, it, it, it takes a while. And I think that, over the years, when we had three technicians, they became pretty used to very quick response. And it's, it's just gotten slower over the years and it's just sheer volume.
And so, do you have like a, an organizer and prioritizer of needs? So as a day, you know, somebody sends you an email, how, how does that whole process-
Yeah, every, every morning, we, we meet here and we, everybody sends emails to, to the help desk. And then we prioritize the most important ones. And they, they usually take care of the ones at the high school first. And then, the two technicians, they, they go to the other buildings, wherever the, there are the most problems or the more important problems.
Well, I'm sorry, one other question. Have we explored leasing versus buying outright? You know, just done a cost analysis and whether that would help in terms of this whole replacement issue?
I have in the past.
Okay.
It, the PCs have, they've really come down in price. I mean, we used to spend over a thousand dollars for a, a new computer. And now, I think the most recent ones we purchased were just over five hundred dollars. And they have more power than, you know, five of the older ones. But the, the leasing, in the past, it, it didn't seem as cost-effective.
Thank you. So just to speak to that, one other thing that, on the Facilities Committee of two years back, we had worked very closely with Bob to try and see if there was a way to add on to the computers that we have an energy-saving component. And Bob spent a lot of time and we did a lot of research on it. And it turned out in the end, do you want to just speak to that, Bob, for a minute?
Yes, we did, we tried it, we tried it here in the library and in a few other locations. It caused more problems than, than it, than it saved energy. The computers themselves, they, they have energy-saving mode. And the monitors also have energy saved, they're all Energy Star. And the software kind of furthered that and just, it was a little bit more aggressive with its power-saving. And it caused problems for anyone that used them. It just, it would, it just caused a lot of problems. So we removed it.
Mr. Pavlichak?
On that, have you looked at software so you can remotely shut them down over the weekends and things like that?
Uh, we, we could do that.
We've, we've done that, where we've installed software on all the machines. So on, you know, Friday night, they can just do a quick, everybody shuts down and anybody that comes in over the weekend can still turn it on. But it just sort of, by default shuts all the machines down. And it also allows you to start them all remotely so you can do a software upgrade on Saturday night. You know, if that's the time you're doing a, a software upgrade or something like that.
We, we could shut them all down with the existing tools that we have built into Windows. But we do, the, the majority of any updates, whether they're antivirus updates, software updates, operating system, it all happens at night when the bandwidth is free. So, most of the computers, they're in sleep mode and they do wake up to get their updates. And all the backup happens at night, too. And over, and on Friday night, the full complete backup happens.
I just, because not, the people at home don't have the benefit of this presentation or the packet that you gave us on smart boards, I'm just going to run down the numbers on this because it's quite impressive. At the high school, we currently have sixty-seven smart boards, projectors and audio components. At Pierce, we have twenty-nine. At Glover, we have eleven. At Collicott, we have ten. At Cunningham, we have nine. And at Tucker, we have ten smart boards. Can you just clarify the difference between the number of cla, so that's the number of classrooms in the school?
Yes.
And how many we have in there?
Right.
Okay. So, I also want to say that the Foundation for Education has given us a lot of these, has paid for a lot of these. And the Copeland Foundation have paid for a lot of these smart boards. So that's-
Already have them, yeah.
-to be recognized as well. But it's such an accomplishment in this day and age. And when you showed that, you know, the recommendation and where Milton's at, we are far beyond the expectations.
Yes, I, I live in Cohasset and I think they have three in the whole district.
Wow. Sorry, Ms. Beckett-Jones?
I don't really have a question, but I guess more of a comment. And I just want you to know that I think it's really important to have technology in the schools. I love the headline, the webpage is great. The smart boards are great, they're a favorite of mine. And especially when the teachers have been trained on them, they're even better. And I know the kids really need technology to compete in this world. Like, just like they need to learn how to read and value books, they need to learn technology. And I can say that my own kids can run rings around me, run circles around me with their technology. I didn't teach them that. Clearly, they got that at school. And when they go to college and when they go into the workforce, they're going to bring those skills with them. So I'd like to see us to be able to maintain a really quality program because I think it goes further than just, oh, isn't a nice webpage and isn't it great to have headline? It's much more for the kids' education and workforce experience. So I don't know what the answer is, the solution, but I hope that we can find a way to see this, continue to see this as a priority. That's all.
I agree.
I thought you-
Mr. Pavlichak?
I, I think we're seeing something similar here to what we've talked about with the, the school buildings. I mean, we, we're in a, a period here where we have lots of new equipment. And, you know, the demands placed on our support for them are relatively small in the same way that the, the schools are in good shape right now because they're relatively new. And now, we're starting to have to deal with recurring capital needs. I think what we, we have to start looking at here is, you know, getting over our period of complacency here with a lot of new equipment and looking at a more long-term plan for this department. Because, I mean, the numbers here don't lie. I mean, clearly, we don't have enough staff to maintain the number of computer, three people for twelve hundred computers, just, it doesn't make it. I mean, there's no way. And, and maintaining a network and all of the servers and all the infrastructure behind it. I mean, that's barely enough people to keep the machines running. So we really do have to look at something in terms of a longer-term plan. I think we've had the luxury of getting by losing a PC technician and, and, and another person in the department because everything was relatively new. But it's clear that, you know, we can't, we can't go much further with that. So we're going to have to look at, I think, in, in, very least, at our, our next round of this next year, is some sort of long-term plan of how to sustain, just even sustain what we have, let alone add things to it. Because I, I just, when you just started and you said we bought, where was it, first page? However, ninety-two-
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two computers this year. And before that, you said we had twelve hundred.
Yeah, that's-
That's twelve years' replacement cycle. I mean, that, that is not even close to a five-year replacement cycle.
Yeah, that's eight percent.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's way off. So, I mean, we really have to have some sort of long-term staffing and replacement plan for this department. Once we're now past the period of just having all this, I mean, school building committee procurement force.
I guess I would like to add to that list as well and say that we don't have a technology teacher in the elementary schools. We have computers and technology, but we don't have someone that's responsible for teaching that. And the teachers are integrating it as best they can into the curriculum at every avenue possible. But there isn't someone teaching those skills. And I think that that would be something that personally I would love to advocate for. So. Any other comments or questions? No, thank you, Bob. That was great.
Thank you, Bob. And while Bob's turning off the computer, I would be remiss if I didn't comment, Bob, that Bob does an outstanding job keeping our system up and running and all of our computers and our network. And sometimes I smile to myself, perhaps twice a year, if you come in early in the morning and a secretary can't get on, they're there first and they want to get on. They're, they take the system for granted and the upgrades and the way that you run the system. I want to acknowledge you and the two technicians for really keeping the system up and running and working to keep, really, we're never shut down. And when I look at Ann Kirkshank, I think years ago, Jeff Kirkshank, her husband, when he was on school committees, used to say to me, "Don't tell anyone you have internet because you really don't at the Milton Public Schools." Because it was down so often. And now, I could never, I, I've never had, I think perhaps, in the last five years, we might have had one day. So I want to compliment you on keeping the system up and running.
It's impressive.
You do a great job. Oh, we're going to ask Jackie Morgan, our food service coordinator-director, to join us for her report, her annual report. Welcome, Jackie.
So you can all see my sauteed spinach? Um, thank you so much for having me here tonight. And just as a kudos to Bob Patterson, our school food service program is all automated now. And his team of two and himself put us in a huge priority as well. And, you know, every time I call the poor things, I have all their cell phone numbers. But they're there, it's, it's amazing that they're always there whenever I need them. So, I'd like to add to that. So thanks for having me. Just want to talk a little bit about the school food service program and how it's going this year. Just want to remind, we have breakfast available?
I'm sorry, you have to just, people are asking, it's spinach, right?
Okay, so you must not be coming to lunch at the cafeteria, are you?
Everyone keeps saying frogs. And I'm like, no, we're not serving frogs in the-
Sauteed spinach with a little oil and garlic.
Delicious.
That we've been serving at the high, we're going to start it at the middle school. So come on down. So we have breakfast every day at all six of our schools. We serve a complete meal for a dollar twenty-five. And every day, we have lunch available. And our prices are a dollar seventy-five for elementary, two dollars for middle. And we have a two-dollar and two-twenty-five meal at the high school. All of them are full reimbursable meals, come with milk, fruit and vegetable. Our two-twenty-five at the high school is our old neighborhood deli bar that we do a beautiful sandwich made to order in front of the students and faculty. And we have pre-made salads every day for students and faculty. So I just want to go over a little bit of information from last school year, just so you understand.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Kelly? Before we move from prices, do you have any idea in terms of other school systems, how our prices come in comparatively? I, I was with someone from Arlington who said, and this is, I think, at the elementary level, they're charging like three dollars and twenty-five cents for lunch. So I just wanted to know if you had a perspective on that in terms of what else is out there in other communities?
Our, our prices are very reasonable. And I think because our prices are where they are, we have huge participation. And I have all those numbers for you. There's legislation coming that pricing might have to be reevaluated and changed, but all of that's really not just a proposal and, and being investigated. But I've been doing this for twenty-six years and I do believe that the, the lower you can keep your prices, the more children have the opportunity to participate. So, I'm going to say this a hundred times tonight, but it's the thirty unbelievable food service employees we have who work so hard every day is why the prices are where they are. Because they're just so great at everything they do. They forecast the food, they cook the food by batch cooking it, so the quality's there. They don't overproduce, they try not to underproduce. And all of that goes into why the prices can be so reasonable. So this is a little of last year, just to give you an idea of the program and where the money comes from and how it comes in and how it comes out. Lunch sales, which include adults and children. And then we have our government reimbursement. We receive money for each paid lunch, each free lunch, each reduced lunch. So all of that comes into us through the state and the federal government. And then we have things, other income. We do a lot of fun things with the kids. We do the fresh, the new freshman barbecue that we did last year, which was insane, but it was fun. And we do a lot of different activities, a little catering. We had Cal Ripken in for a big luncheon on a weekend. So that's where some of our other income comes in from. And that's our, our total income is just under one point three million. And our expenditures for last year, I just did more the percentages so you can see once again why our school lunch prices and breakfast prices are so low. We work really hard on our food cost in the Milton School Food Service and it really goes back to the fabulous employees that we have. Keeping your food costs down is one of the biggest things that I can control as the Director of Food Services. Our labor costs are all determined through our, our contract negotiations. And our other expenses, Nick, last year was under the guidance of Mr. Gillis and Bob Patterson, who just left. We did put in a new server for the Milton School Food Service because when lunch is going, we were just draining all of the, the servers. So we did invest in a new server. And under their direction, we also replaced five of our computerized cash registers and had a trade-in program with our NutriKids. So that was part of our other, other expenses for last year. And right now, this kind of explains how many of the students participate and purchase a full reimbursable meal every day. We believe strongly of serving a full meal. We're not really into the business of sterling, serving, you know, french fries or pizza. We, we serve full lunches and we're very proud of that. So an average daily participation is what that ADP means. And this is how many of the students and parents believe in the program. And we have really strong participation, we're very proud of. This is a lot of wording, but I just wanted to show you that we just made the Patriot Ledger last week and I wanted to thank, we had a parent from Glover School who I've met a few times out in the grocery store, she's lovely. But her name is Jen Urbilaget, I hope I'm saying it right. But she came forward and told us of a three-thousand-dollar salad bar grant from Whole Foods. And so we went right to our grant writer and we won, so we're very thrilled. And we had a big grand opening about a week ago at the Pierce Elementary, Pierce Middle School. And I just wanted to thank her publicly, and I wanted to put this on our, on our chart so people could read it. But it's just another way to get children to eat fruit and vegetables and hopefully, they'll continue to eat them for their lifetime. Some new things that are happening in child nutrition, we're a federal program and the new child nutrition reauthorization bill was just signed this past July. And it's a really great bill, but with that bill comes a lot of changes. So right now, the nutrition part of it is a ninety-day comment period. I'm going to just show you a little bit of what is in the proposal. People across the country can comment and that's the link to comment. And this will be up on the website. Sean Walsh is going to put that up for us. So if any of you have, that what you hear or any parents at home would like to comment, anything positive, constructive, I strongly advise you, because the United States Department of Agriculture really wants to hear what people have to say. So a big part of the new reauthorization, it's called the Healthy Hungry, Hungry Free Children. And that's really what the goal is, is by two thousand and fifteen, there'll be no more hunger for children. And the real reason why they're doing this is they're trying to come in, in line with the two thousand and five dietary guidelines. And it's two thousand and eleven. So this is how long it takes to get these things through. And what they're really looking to do is to increase whole grains, fruits, vegetables, everything that we've been doing here in Milton. So this is very busy to look at, but I wanted to have it up on the webpage for parents to see. But these are all the new proposals and regulations, which talks about in the next slide. So right now, we have current requirements and then we're going to have new proposed requirements. And what they're looking to do is dramatically increase the amount of fruit and vegetables that are served in school breakfast and in school lunches. And financially, it's going to be a huge increase in expenses. They're projecting that breakfast will cost thirty cents more to produce and lunch will cost fifty percent, fifty cents more to produce. And they're looking to offer six cents extra in reimbursements to cover this. So, it's a really important time to propose and to, and to comment. So what we're doing right now at our high school level is the easier one to talk about. mandating that we potentially could be having to serve them one cup of fruit a day and one cup of vegetable a day. And if they don't take one or the other, it won't be considered a meal. So, many food service directors are really struggling, because we've worked so hard to encourage children to take fruit and vegetables with their food. We don't really want to be in a situation at the cash register where we either have to turn them around, if any of the students are over there looking at me, where we turn you around and make you go get more food, or we have to put food, we really want children to be able to make selections for themselves, choose what they want, and then be lifetime healthy eaters. So, many of us are very, very concerned with the mandatory, you have to have a fruit or vegetable, a full serving. If you had like a half a serving, it wouldn't count. So, we're very concerned with that. And in our breakfast program, in Milton, we're very proud that we don't have juice at breakfast. We have fresh fruit. And we give them an eight-ounce white milk every morning, because it gets them to drink their milk. And now, they're proposing that we serve them a full cup of fruit every morning for breakfast. And many school systems are thinking of going back to the eight-ounce carton of juice, and then, we're worried they're not going to drink their milk. So, there's just a lot of things that are working through. I know you'll be surprised, but I've commented and told them what our thoughts were. But this will be good for parents to look at. All of our grains in Milton, all of our breads, our hamburger rolls, everything's whole grain. So, we're light years ahead of them. So, we're very lucky. And, but just a lot of these changes are coming. They're requesting that we only serve fat-free flavored milk, but unfortunately, it doesn't exist. So, those are the things that will be coming through the years. The Institute of Medicine last year had asked us to try to find flavored milk with less sugar. So, we went to our vendors, and we asked for that, and they did a fabulous job, brought the sugar down from 26 to 22 grams, but they had to raise the fat a little to save the taste. Because milk is such a nutrient-dense food. It's such a great way to get children to get their calcium and vitamin D. And now, they came up with a regulation that doesn't talk about the grams of sugar. It talks about the fat in the milk. So, it's just, it's just a little confusing. So, we're hoping that these proposals will be adjusted. And if everyone comments, that would really help them. One thing I always try to remind people is that we have free and reduced meals available to children for breakfast and for lunch. It's a very difficult time out there. If anyone has lost their job or is struggling financially, I'm the only one that approves the free and reduced applications. You can apply anytime during the year. It's very confidential. All of our computers are, everything's computerized. All the children do is put in their four-digit secret code. Or in the elementary, they just say their name. No one knows who's free and reduced. We're very proud. About 90% of our free children participate in the program every day. And about 83% of our reduced children participate every day. And that is a huge gift to our staff and food service, because they just make the kids come through. They feel comfortable. They feel confident. And, you know, people are losing their jobs, or they might be having their hours reduced. So, it's on the front page of the webpage at the MiltonPS.org. It's on the food service. It's in all of the main offices. I can email it to you. I can mail it to you. So, please know that that's available. It's a great program. Sometimes, people are just using it for temporary, and they come to me, you know, with great news. We don't need this anymore. So, I just really encourage anyone who needs it to please utilize the program.
And you know what you might do, Jackie? When we send out our email blasts, at each school, we've identified the students who don't have email. And so, now, at the mid-year mark, you might do a cover letter and send it out hard copy, and the administrative assistants in each school will follow up and send out that mid-year reminder for those people who don't have the technology to go online in their homes.
I'd be happy to do that. That's a great idea. So, that's a very important part of our program, too, that all children get breakfast and lunch in school if they need it. And that's it. So, I just have my phone number and my email up there. I have a lot of parents who need to connect with me with allergies. I have a lot of parents with children, little children with diabetes. On our webpage in the Milton Food Service, we have a huge, like, eight-page spreadsheet of every food item I buy and the eight allergens. So, it's just really been a great tool. I had a great intern from Framingham State University, thank God, and she put it together. But it's just been a real nice tool. A lot of times when parents come in to meet with me about allergies, they have the spreadsheet in their hands. So, I'm always so thrilled that people are using it. But just if there's anyone out there who didn't know, and a lot of school systems have been coming on and sneaking it and using it for themselves, which is wonderful. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. But the 30 unbelievable food service staff, I hope they're all watching. They're just, they work so hard, and they're just so lovely. And I just want to say thank you so much to them all.
Well, thank you to them, but also thank you to you for your leadership in, in working with all of them. You do a fabulous job, and it is your passion.
I do. I love it.
I know that on many different levels.
Should I go back to my spinach?
No. I just want you to talk a little bit more, if you don't mind, about the reimbursement, because you talked about total reimbursement a couple of times throughout the presentation. And the page that talked about the income for the year said, "Last fiscal year, we received $361,000 in reimbursement." So, can you talk a little bit about how we get that money, please?
Perfect tie-in. If a free child comes through the school lunch program, the computer identifies him as free, and we don't ask them for any money. And at the end of each month, I do a claim form into the Department of Elementary/Secondary Ed. And for each free meal that comes through, together with state reimbursement and federal reimbursement, it's $2.76, is paid back to the school system for that meal. The reduced price is minus 40 cents, that the child has to pay the 40 cents. And some of them are really struggling with that. And then, they'll give us the $2.36, I hope I'm doing my math, doing it backwards, for every reduced meal, lunch that we serve. And for every paid meal that we serve, we get approximately about 27 and 1/2 cents. So, that calculates out by month, times 10 months, and that's our government reimbursement.
Great. I had a question about, if you have a sense of how many kids with food allergies we have?
Well, I say if you live in Milton, if you have an allergy, move to Milton, because I feel like everybody does. And it's really, I just think it's really exciting that they have the confidence in the school food service program to utilize the program, which to me is a huge compliment to my staff, because that's really difficult to let your child loose in a building with 300 or 400 children and trust that they're not going to have, you know, if you've ever seen a child have a reaction, it is the scariest thing for them, but to even have your child see that. So, we've done a lot of things. I'm a real particular purchaser. I make sure I buy nothing with peanuts, or, you know, we've converted everything over to sun butter. We make our own hummus, but of course, we use sun butter. But, you know, I just, I think there's a lot of families with allergies, but I think it's that, because they all come forward, which is wonderful. And-
How many?
I don't have, the nurses would have more of that. They really do a great job communicating-
Well, that's what I was thinking of with the nurses, like, how many food allergies-
So, the nurses communicate with foods, like, I get all of my information from the nurse. The nurse gives me the information, and then, I can take that information and put it in our computerized program. So, if someone comes through the line and they have an allergy, a big screen pops up, and it says allergic to. I type all that in. And then, I put in bold and capital letters what they're allergic to. So, I have a lot of interns that come through, and they're always like, "Oh, my God, he's buying lunch!" But they do. And we, we work, a lot of parents whose children have a lot of allergies, they're really dedicated. They come in and they develop menus for what their child can eat that week. We have a child at the middle school, he just comes in and winks, because he doesn't want anyone to know. And it's really, you know, you want to make the children feel just normal. You want to make them feel like everybody else when they come through. We try to make their lunches look like the day's lunch, so that they don't stick out. And they might have to have wheat bread instead of a whole wheat bulky roll, because the bulky roll has milk and the wheat bread doesn't. So, we just work together with all of that. I think celiac's becoming a big thing. A lot of little children coming through. So, we have rice tortillas in and rice bread in and rice checks. I'm getting their professional on celiac. And, you know, game light hot dogs. There's a lot of food items that we're working with. But the other day, I had a mom in with a little one in kindergarten or first grade who's diabetic and celiac. There's a lot of double, triple things out there.
And I, my last question is, do you still have those peanut-free tables in the cafeteria?
We have peanut-free tables in all the elementary schools. And my staff, once again, are so fabulous. They wash those tables first every lunch with brand-new cloths, so that those are never cross-contaminated. So, it's really, it is quite amazing, but it's such a safe environment. If we know and it's identified what the allergens are, that we can really work around that.
Thank you. Mrs. Kelly?
If I could just go back to the reimbursement again?
Mm-hmm.
The new proposal, the, I'm just trying to see if I'm connecting the dots correctly. So, if a student who is a free and reduced comes through and doesn't take the particular menu in quantities that is prescribed by the new law, then it wouldn't be counted as a meal, and therefore, the reimbursement wouldn't be as intended, or?
So, right now, we have a program called Offer vs. Serve. We offer the children five food items a day, and they need to take three. So, with the new proposal, they're not really sure yet how many items a child will be allowed to refuse. And that really determines if you can press the button that says lunch. So, if they are mandated to take the full cup of fruit and/or the full cup of vegetables, and if they don't have one or the other on their tray, the talk right now is that it will not be able to be a reimbursable meal. And we'll go back into the business of à la carte sales. We'll be selling slices of pizza, and we'll be selling milk separate, and we'll be selling, and we'll lose a lot of that reimbursement, which is why we're concerned. And I don't really want to force children to take a cup of, I mean, sometimes when we put, like, we had roasted Brussels sprouts last week. I know I'm whack. But, you know, maybe someone might try two or three of them. But we went through 25 pounds with them. It's our second time we've done it. So, I feel like we're a classroom in the cafeteria, and we're exposing and exposing. And I was going to bring you three-bean salad tonight, but I didn't want to. But, you know, we're doing a lot with beans in the schools. And, you know, the first few times they're on the menu, everybody's like, "You've got to be kidding me." And then, I'm walking around eating beans and trying to see if the kids will. So, it's, for us, we just feel like this is very drastic to do right away. And we've asked for them to just pilot this at some school systems, to see how it goes, see what, you know, will someone take a cup of green beans? Will someone take a cup of, that's a lot. It's a lot of, it's a lot of food. And they're going to limit corn and white potatoes. You can only have one or the other, or peas, once a week. And that's why I put that big spreadsheet up there. Not that I expect you to read it tonight, but if you're at home and you're reading it, the fine print down below, I mean, the poor farmers from Idaho were up at the conference. I was just at, like, "Why are potatoes bad all of the sudden?" And maybe you could put, like, a limit on fried potatoes, but not potatoes. And today, we had roasted blissed potato in the elementary school that are just spectacular, and real natural food, not processed. And if this goes through, we won't be able to do that. We'll only be able to do it once a week. And if we do roasted potatoes, we can't serve corn. But I'll-
Who ever thought it was this involved?
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty involved. So, it's, it's in there for people to read. It's really well-intentioned. I remind myself that all the time. I see John laughing at me over there.
I'm just writing Merriam-Notch. She said Jackie Morgan's great.
Pull off the deep end. But, you know, it's always doing the right thing. But, you know, if you remember, this is the 2005 dietary guidelines they're trying to get in line with, and it's 2011. So, this has been coming for a long time, which is why Milton was so supportive in going forward with the whole grains and the fruits and the vegetables.
And you do an outstanding job, Jackie.
Thank you.
And as John said, Jackie's great. And Matt Gillis is your biggest fan, talking comparatively with food service programs across the state. And we should also, just as Bob Patterson spoke to after the school building project, you and the children and the students were the recipients of unbelievable kitchens.
Oh, beautiful, state-of-the-art, onsite production, which is a gift, 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 because the food is prepared at the school, it's served at the school, it's not being transported over town. The risk of foodborne illness has completely been reduced, because we're not trucking and losing temperature controls. And that onsite school and onsite kitchens are, I just can't even say enough. And, you know, we're struggling with the same thing with equipment. It's, it's all new, and it's beautiful. But, you know, it needs a maintenance. Maculus has been a huge supporter of preventive maintenance. We have the refrigeration come in at the end of the year, and they do a huge preventive maintenance. So, the, you know, everything keeps running, everything keeps going. But as everything ages, we need to invest a little bit of our money-
Or in real cafeterias, when I was the principal of Cunningham, it was a half a gym. So, the children ate their lunch with the balls flying past them, eating at the cafeteria. So, the facilities are conducive for children to have real lunches and breakfast within the schools.
And, and the food cooked, basically not to order, but batch-cooked throughout the day, which brings the quality of the food up dramatically, which in turn, that's why the children will eat a roasted Brussels sprout, because it just came out of the oven, and it wasn't cooked at 9 o'clock in the morning, and lunches at 1:15. So, it really has allowed the children to-
Appreciate you and your staff.
Try. Their staff's been amazing, and I just want to thank them a million times over.
One more time, Jackie. No, we have a few more comments. Mr. Pavlicek, please.
You mentioned people going through the line and paying. Do you have an idea of how many people are basically running on a cashless basis, where their parents will send them a check or something, and it's loaded?
So, we have basically all prepayment going now in the Milton schools. High school, we still have a strong group of kids that are just, I call them my holdouts. They just like their cash. Like, my oldest one wanted his $5 a day, you know. What could he do with it? But, for an example, Collycott Cunningham, that has a little over 1,100 children in the lunch program, takes in usually about $2 to $3 of cash a day. So, because of that, the lines move so much faster. Because of that, no one knows who's free and who's paying. And we also, because of Matt Gillis and Bob Patterson, I'll keep saying them all night, we have now online payment, where parents can go online, put payment on through a credit card. The computers update it, when I said Bob was going to turn them off, the computers update at 7:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m., 3:00 p.m., and midnight, and the money instantly goes right into the child's account. So, if, you know, I always say it's really never the child's fault they don't have money. It's us busy parents that, you know, running. I have so many people that call me just totally in a panic, "Oh, my God, I forgot to get the check! And they'll go online, and they'll put a credit card in, and boom, the money's right there waiting for the child." It just takes a lot of stress out of everyone's day. And a substantial amount of money is coming through, through the online parent, payment. Parents are really appreciating that convenience. And it gives them the opportunity to see the last 30 days of their children's transactions and where the money is actually going. Are they buying their friends?
And parents can do that on the front of the webpage, on the Milton Public School webpage, on the bottom right.
So, it's really, and I have to say, it's a huge compliment to the parents and the prepay system, because the less cash we have, the faster the lines can go.
Do we pay a service charge on the?
There's a $1.75 convenience fee that the parent pays. But if you have four children, and you put money in all four children's accounts at the same time, it's still just $1.75. But they can still absolutely send in checks to the schools. We have a locked mailbox in the main office at every school, and a locked mailbox in the cafeteria at every school, and we empty that out every single day. Because our goal is to always have the money on the child's account before they come through the line.
Ms. Gillis?
Yeah. You know, my experience in other places, as well as here, one of the reasons why I'm a fan of Jackie. But Jackie, could you just tell folks, just between last year and this year, how many different school systems have come in to observe the program? Want to ballpark it?
I've had about 20 to 25 school systems come in and visit for the day. You know, it's, it's driven by a lot of different things. It's food service directors who want to learn more. It's superintendents who, who want to change. I had another group in last Friday, and it was driven by two parents. And I, I think parents are very well-intentioned, and we want the best for our children. But one superintendent came in with two parents who were just lovely. But they were thinking, "Why can't we have hormone-free food? And why can't we have cage-free chicken? And why can't we have?" And they were just really well-kind-intended parents, but they didn't understand the volume of children that come through and buy. And if you want to keep your lunches at $1.75 and $2, so that they can participate, you have to balance off with the USDA commodities and what you use. And, you know, first time ever, but I had a box of strawberries dipped in chocolate delivered to me the next day, which I brought right into the cafeteria, because I'm like, "I'll eat them all." But I think it's, it's, you know, in school food service, you're the only one in the school system. You know, there's might be principals to run things over with. And, you know, if you're a custodian, you can run off another custodian, great ideas. But sometimes in food service, you're like that sole person. So, we work really hard in our collaborative. But a lot of people like to come and tour and see how the program's running. But it all really goes back to the staff and how hard they work and the quality of the food that they make.
Jackie, you've brought us a long way from when we had an outside food service provider, and it's just amazing what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. You do an outstanding job.
I'll bring the beans next time.
Thank you.
Ms. Bailey, before we move on, would it be okay, we have our student, Michelle Naby, who's here. And Michelle comes faithfully every week. And I just, we've talked about two things today, tonight, that really, you probably have a lot of thoughts about, the technology in the schools and the food service. And I wondered if you'd just like to speak to either of those.
So, regarding the technology, I'm probably an unusual student, because whenever I get on the computer, I'm like, "Wow, I'm so happy I have internet on a computer that actually works." And of course, there's things that I wish that could happen more often, because of the websites that are blocked, and those are inconveniences. But I, I look at the things that are more useful to me, such as like Microsoft Word and the PowerPoints and everything like that. And for the food services also, I appreciate that all the time. And it's just so great to see the variety of foods we have every day. And I have a favorite, actually, me and my friend were talking about it today. And we were like, "Oh, we love the chicken parmigiana and the macaroni and cheese." And so, it's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
I think you just made Mrs. Morgan's night. I'm going to talk to you about our exciting, hopeful-
I think you just made Mrs. Morgan's night. Okay, I'm gonna talk to you about our exciting, hopeful revenue-saving program, or cost-avoidance program with solar panels. We have a bid out on the street. And if you remember back in December, our consultant, who wasn't able to make it here tonight, a gentleman named Robert Patterson, for a rooftop project, to put solar panels on the roofs of the high school, the middle school, Glover and Tucker. We weren't gonna touch Cunningham Collicott, because we already have some solar panels on there, just to keep everything clean and simple. And that would save us about 12% to 14% on our consumption if we were to put about 700 KW worth of solar panels on the roofs. Well, the law got changed in October, and it got signed into law in December. And laws aren't always crystal clear in their writing, so it takes a little while for regulations to sort things out. But the end effect was that we could now put solar panels off-site, not on municipally-owned land, and still get the same credit, the full net metering credit from the local distribution company, they call it, or the electric company, in our case, EnStar. Even though it wasn't on school-owned land, as long as we basically lived within a few criteria. And the first four of them are, you know, first, that we would have it, the developer would have to work within the EnStar zone where we are with our current metering rate, which gives us about 20 towns. It doesn't go too far south, but it goes about as far west as Medway, and goes north up to about Bedford. There are a few places with municipal electric companies that aren't in there. But for the most part, going west, right out through Boston, up to Medway there, that's our zone. We would have to agree to be responsible for the meter, the same way we are now, as if we're responsible for it here. Which is, basically, we just agree to buy the electricity that runs through that meter. EnStar would still come out and service it if it was broken, replace it the way they do in a timely manner. And we would have to agree to buy all of the electricity that's generated from those solar panels. And I'll get into that a little bit more. So the major benefits of this project, there's no capital cost by us. This is all fronted by the developer, and the developer's gonna make their money back through tax credits and selling us electricity at a discounted price. And we're confident we're gonna get a discounted price, because they get to compete with one another. So what is that gonna mean for us? You know, with the rooftop project, since we would own the land, the developer wouldn't have that cost, we would be paying, we're expecting to pay between 4 and 6 cents. But again, we're only gonna buy about 12% to 14% of our electricity consumption. Through this, we expect to pay between 8 and 12 cents, but we can buy 70% to 80% of our electricity consumption, which would be a savings if we were gonna pay 8 cents a kilowatt hour instead of the approximate 17 and 1/2 we'll be paying next January. That would be about $320,000 a year. Or if we're paying 12 cents, it would still be about $180,000 a year in costs avoided. It's gonna take about four to eight months to implement. The obstacles that we have are gonna be working with EnStar, setting up the meter, taking the agreement for that, and consolidating our electric bills. Right now, our electric bills come in two pieces. We get one from EnStar, and we get another one from a company right now called TransCanada, because we buy our supply from them. Next January, it'll be from a company called Direct Energy. They're in Houston, so we buy it in Canada today. In January, we'll buy it from Houston. But in this case, we can reduce our supply without any, our consumption without any penalty from EnStar or from Direct Energy, because of the contract that we have signed with the power options. So the long-term, stable pricing, this could be a flat pricing proposal, or it could be a low escalation of 1% or 2% per year, depending on how the proposals come in, and we can lock into this energy savings contract for 20 years. That's a lot longer than most contracts go in for, but I'm gonna explain how that, how and why that can be a really good thing for us. And of course, we have the ability to reject any and all proposals if it's not in our best interest. So there really isn't a whole lot of risk. The big risk is not asking. So why now? The town can buy up to 6,000 kilowatt hours, or six megawatts. So if the school were to buy three, the town wind projects about 1.8. We could still even add the rooftop project as well, and still have some extra left over under the Mass Green Communities Act. Like I said, I'm not gonna go into it all, but it's basically tax credits. Or if you heard of cap and trade, this is the trade where the utility companies are basically required by law to produce a certain amount of renewable energy. And there's not a whole lot of it out there. It's expensive. It does not work as well as fossil fuels, as far as cost efficiency. Everything else is cheaper than renewables. Gas, oil, coal, they're all cheaper than wind and solar. So they have to subsidize it, and they sort of force it this way with the trade measure. The competitive interest for us, again, it's zero cost to the schools to get into this. The projects are financed by the solar developers. We're gonna get some of that, some of their costs are gonna be passed on to us, and the price they propose to us, but we choose whether or not we want to accept that price. Talked about the tax incentives. Told you, you know, low-cost electricity between 8 and 12 cents per kilowatt hour, and we expect to be paying about 18 and 1/2 cents. That's what we have budgeted for 2012. You know, this we can implement in a matter of months and not years. These solar panels are really not that complex. They're like bigger rector sets. You only need an electrician for a small part of it. So what they need is a flat site, or not even necessarily a flat site, could be sloped, but as long as it's facing south and not shaded, it's a viable option. And we can have long-term pricing for that. So the impact on our budget is we're gonna have a set price, and we're gonna know what that is. And since we wouldn't be buying all of our energy, we still get to work on what we've been doing pretty well, at least the last three years here, which is reducing our consumption, taking advantage of the energy rebate programs, changing our habits, changing the light fixtures. You know, Bob talked about the monitors being Energy Star. We're almost there. We still got a few old, big, you know, tubes. Remember the tube TV? Somebody might still have one at home. Not everything's a flat screen. We're almost there. We still have a little room for improvement that we think we can get to easily on our own. So, you know, that difference in savings, even just making it simple on the fourth bullet there, the difference between the EnStar price and the off-site price, you know, using a round number of 20 cents versus a 12-cent savings, so if we get 8 cents times 100,000 kilowatt hours, that's $8,000 in annual savings. Now, 100,000 kilowatts sounds like a lot, but we use about 4 and 1/2 million kilowatt hours. So we have a lot of opportunity to save some money here, put it back into the classroom. So with this project, we could save between 19% and 34% of our electricity budget, and that could be 180,000 to 320,000 dollars. Just getting into, are we really, are we buying too much here? This is something we're putting a little thought and effort into. Using FY08 as our base year, where all the schools were done, all the contractors were out, and we had a full year worth of utility bills, we used almost 6 million kilowatt hours. And we thought, "Wow, that's more than we should be using." So even before I came, they went out and hired, they were considering energy savings companies with the Facility Subcommittee. They went out and hired an HVAC person with, we'll say, more than practical knowledge of electrical use. And Jim went around and basically recommissioned most of the motors and a lot of the fixtures and systems in our schools. And Bill Ritchie took advantage of all the EnStar utility rebate programs, where you can swap out a light fixture, and in some cases, they'll give you anywhere from half to 75%, 80% of the cost as a rebate. And we did a lot of that work ourselves. We did firm out, I think, a little of it, to really bring down our consumption. So depending on where you wanna look at it, because at some point, you can really only go so far, because we still have to turn on some lights, run some computers, some of the motors for the HVAC things, the temperature booster in the food service department, they're just things that we're always gonna have to do. We're saving 60%, 3 megawatts is 60% from FY08, 76% from when we finished it in fiscal 10. And it looks like it'll be about 80% of our consumption at the end of FY11, which we're currently on pace to cut our consumption by about 6 and 1/2 to 7% the end of this year. Last year, we cut it 7 and 1/2%. The year before that, we cut it 14 and 1/2%. And that's all stuff we've been doing in-house. And all of the staff deserve a little recognition for that. The teachers, the custodians, everybody that's got a desk and office space. I think more and more people make an effort to do the right thing and turn things off when they're not using them. And it makes a difference, and it helps us put some more money back in the classroom.
And you, Mr. Gillis, Mr. Ritchie, and the Facility Subcommittee for making it a priority and then communicating it to all of the employees.
Thank you. You know, if you're looking at this in the past, present, or the future, you can go on the Federal Department of Energy's webpage, and it is really an encyclopedia of information. And it's come a long way. They got a lot of graphs and charts and matrices that make it really easy to get a hold of this information. In 1990 in Massachusetts, since I didn't really have time to pull the bills, assuming that we had them in town, but we probably don't, the energy bills, what the state average was for electricity, they were paying about 12 and 1/2 cents a kilowatt hour. You know, in fiscal 10, when we average out what we actually paid for all that we consumed, we averaged about 19.4 cents a kilowatt hour, which is about an average increase of 2.7% a year. If that sounds like it's close to inflation, it's because it is. The utility companies have employees, and they want to get raises as well. And the suppliers, that they buy their equipment and material from, same thing. So over the long term, energy tends to track inflation. You know, if we look it out 20 years in the future, and we take that same 2.7% increase, you know, we'd be looking at 29 cents a kilowatt hour, which is an 11.5 cent increase, or a 60 cent, 66% total increase. Now, remember, we can contract out for 20 years. So if we can get a discount and start saving money today and lock in that price, and the rest of the world is gonna continue to progress, and capitalism, you know, God willing, will progress, the costs of other things are gonna go up, and we're gonna have a nice, low, locked, fixed-in price, should the price come in that way and we choose to accept the deal. You know, and I think it's gonna be a lot higher than that. I mean, I think everybody's seen the disaster in Japan, and in my professional opinion, it's, I'll even say it's got a little bit limited value, because it isn't what I do for a living. They're oversounding the alarm on this nuclear reactor melting down, and people in California running out and, you know, putting drugstores, you know, selling out their iodine. It's just not likely to happen. You know, we haven't built a nuclear reactor in this country since the '70s, and we haven't had any meltdowns. Because of Chernobyl, the regulations and restrictions are so tight on it that it makes it really unlikely for it to happen, but the fear factor says that it's not gonna happen. If some of these reactors start to go down, whether they're in Massachusetts, in Plymouth, or Yankee in Vermont, the supply is still gonna be there, because all the homes and businesses and everything around it's still there, the price is gonna go way up. So if we can lock in a fixed price just for that alone, that would be great. The president has made it quite clear that he doesn't believe in coal technology. And coal produces more carbon emissions than the other fossil fuels. But it also produces 40% of the country's electricity output. And we have four coal-generated plants in Massachusetts. So if those things are gonna be regulated to the point where they're not cost-effective, and there isn't a replacement in, full replacement in natural gas and oil, and they have their drawbacks, they all have their drawbacks, some problems, but, you know, the price is more likely gonna go up more quickly than it has in the last 20 years, that some of those power plants may not get their certificates renewed and go offline. Although I did hear in the news, it's funny when you're thinking about this stuff, the things that you catch quickly. The Yankee plant in Vermont, before this earthquake in Japan, it got renewed for another 20 years, which, believe it or not, is a big relief for everybody in New England, since they supply most of Vermont, some of New Hampshire, and some of Massachusetts electricity. It's a big relief for us that they're staying online and that they were deemed safe enough to do so, because all of our electric bills would've gone up. As the economy's recovering, that's not something that we need. So, you know, if we get the right price, and I don't want to say what that is publicly, because we'll be getting proposals in next week, I'm gonna recommend to the committee, and I think the Facility Subcommittee will be participating in the evaluations of these folks with me, that we lock in. And we could actually save more than the 150,000 that we've committed to in the budget, should the proposals work out. And we have two options to choose from. We could get it from the rooftop solar panels, or we could get it off-site. So, I mean, there's some contracting documents to go up. Spent a lot of time talking with John Flynn at the end of last week, the beginning of this week. We're in accord. They've also done this with Natick. They're doing a similar thing as well with the off-site and rooftop on town-owned land through their DPW. Pittsfield and Greenfield are doing this on municipal land that they own with landfills. Plymouth started with the rooftops. They were looking at 11 school roofs. They pared it back to six. And they're looking at the off-site as well, as I just talked with my colleague yesterday, Gary Costin in Plymouth, he's the school business manager there. I was hoping Gary would go first, and now he's looking forward to seeing us go first, so he gets some results, as they've pulled their stuff back, and they're looking to go back out. Methuen is also looking for a municipal landfill, and Lowell had already done some things on rooftops, although I don't think that was necessarily a municipal project. In the walkthroughs, one of the developers said they had done 500 KW in Lowell on several different rooftops, and would that be sufficient for comparison? I said, "Yeah, sure would." You know, so I think we're gonna have some viable options. One of the things that we put in there was a performance bond, so that we filter out some of the folks that might want to lowball something without the actual financing. They're gonna have to have a performance bond, a form of insurance that they can perform and do on their contracts, so they'll be a little bit vetted by an insurance company, as well as how we review their financing and security. So I guess that's about it for the update. Proposals are now due on March 31st at noon. It's a public process, but unlike a bid, we don't open the financial piece. We just open the qualifications first, and then we rank them, and we get in order, and then we, then we'll get to the financial piece, because we're looking for the quality of the developer here, to make sure we get somebody that's been there, done that at least, and can do it again, as opposed to just a low bid. Any questions?
I'm sorry.
When you talk about off-site, of course, we no longer have a landfill that's available, unless you wanna take one of the holes from Cory Hills and make it into a solar farm. What are we looking, and Milton is a very built-up town. Do we have anything in mind, or do we have anything that we think a developer would have in mind? I mean, other than, you know, putting a solar panel farm at the DPW yard or something like this?
The developers, some of them have already owned land for this, and they, when they were coming through the walkthrough, there was a gentleman from a New Jersey company that, right after he was finished the walkthrough, he was going to meet with real estate agents, looking for land that would be in the, his first question was, "So what's the zone?" And I said, "Well, I'll have to get back to you on the Apogee Contact, EnStar." And that was one of my first responses. So like I said, there's about 20-some-odd towns, and they're all basically going west, not really south. And it goes about as far as Medway and west, and kinda northwest out to Bedford. So there are some towns with some significant land out there that hasn't been developed. Somebody that grew up in Milford, right next to Medway, all those towns, all those M-Towns on Route 109, there's still land available.
So, Mr. Gillis, you've described it, it's their responsibility to find the land.
Right.
The developer does that, and then we...
To find the land and lease it or own it.
Right.
And that's part of the reason why we'd pay a higher price per KW, but we could buy more KWs.
But if we had the acreage that we were able to use... But if we had the acreage that we were able to use, that would increase our savings?
It would. If, I mean, Milton's got a remarkable track record of generous donors to the school system, but if someone were to donate a plot of land, whether it be in town or out of town, with, you know, on the low end, three acres for a megawatt, high end, five acres, depending on the type of panels and the setup that they use, we could, you know, basically get the lower price.
And the land would have to face to the south, you said?
Yeah, the panels have to face south, opening to the sun.
But the land has to have that exposure.
Yeah, I mean, because we're in the northern hemisphere, facing due south gets us the most amount of sunlight throughout the course of the day.
So just to clarify that yet a little bit further, is that if someone were to have that land available, they would also, they would receive money for it. So they'd be leasing their land, we'd be buying the electricity, and the developer's the coordinator of all of that?
So if there's anybody at home listening, and they want the list of developers that have taken out proposals, I'd be happy to send them that list, so they could start to contact folks with options. Some of the developers, these are big companies, some of them are international. They don't just do solar panels in Massachusetts. They're in California, they're in China, in Europe. They might, you might be a match for them if you had some open space that didn't require a lot of clearing of the shade, you know, of trees for shading.
Mrs. Kelly?
On what page this is? It's, "The school department must agree to own or be responsible for the meter and one hundred percent of electricity generated." What does that mean? I guess, I'm trying to picture ten years down the line, maybe the equipment doesn't work anymore, I don't know. Are we responsible for sort of giving back what was supposed to be coming out of there? How does that all work long-term?
Well, think of it this way. We're going to consume the electricity here, and we're planning on buying seventy, eighty percent of it somewhere else. So we're going to agree to buy the electricity that's generated there, and we'll get a credit on our meters here. We agree to buy all the electricity that's generated there. And in the performance contract with the developer, they're going to agree to produce X amount of electricity. And we're going to agree to buy it. So that's why we're not trying to buy a hundred percent. We're going to try to buy the bulk of it at a discount, and then work to get down to about zero. And because we're a town department, it's not clear yet in the regulations, but we seem to have some head nods that if we got below the three million, six hundred thousand, for example, and we had an extra hundred thousand that we were on the hook to buy for, we, our department of the town, we could probably add a meter, and we'll find out in the negotiation process and the setup process if we can do that, and give it to another town department, for example, the library, you know, which would probably be happy to get the discounted electricity price, especially as prices continue to rise.
And one of the reasons I ask the question is, I'm not sure how the windmill is intended to work, if it's that same type of technology. So I guess, I appreciate that we're moving down this road, and I think it's an exciting opportunity for cost savings, but I want us to make sure that we're inclusive of all the things that are going on in town, so that we don't overstep our sort of capacity in terms of how we look at this.
Well, I've had some conversations with Rich Kleiman, the Chair of the Wind Committee, and also recently John Michael Shields at Capital, and Will Clark. And the intent of the wind project, as I've been told and understand it, is that that is going to be a revenue generator, where we're going to produce the electricity and take the money from the electric company. We're not going to use that to offset our bills. They hope to take that income and use it as a set aside for capital investments and replenishments in the town.
All right, thank you.
Right, that's my understanding as well.
You certainly answered all the questions when you were ill at the last meeting. There were several questions, and I appreciate your presentation. And this presentation will be online, and any school community member or citizen who has further questions can contact Mr. Gillis, as he's done a tremendous amount of work on this proposal. I appreciate it.
Matt, if you could just hold on one sec. Mr. Cahane has a question, and Mrs. Kelly again.
Matt, I'm just unsure about something. So this year, we have N-Star and TransCanada?
TransCanada's our supplier. N-Star will always be our local distribution company unless somebody buys them out.
And then next year, we have Direct Energy?
That's right.
So how, where's the correlation between Direct Energy and the developer if we do go with solar panels?
There isn't too much of one, other than the contract that we have through Power Options, which is our, it's a state collaborative that also allows nonprofits to join. So there's a lot of hospitals in there as well. They're the largest joint purchase of electricity in the state. And since they have so much buying power, they can put some terms and conditions in their contracts that you can't always get if you're out on your own. And one of them is that if we start producing renewable energy, or start reducing our consumption, we're not on the hook to buy what our estimated or prior consumption history was. And that was appealing to me.
And just one last thing?
Yes.
Just on a smaller scale, I think you'd be interested to hear about the LED light bulbs? Glad you talked about it in the auditoriums?
Thank you.
Sure.
How the rebates?
Bless you.
Thank you.
At Facility Subcommittee meeting last Thursday, one of our members, John Kibbe, he's a parent, he's also a recent N-Star employee, and he's, he works in their municipal rebate programs, which, you know, you really can't get any closer than that, to having the right person you want to talk to about saving energy through rebates.
He was on our committee before he had that job.
He was, yeah. He worked for a controls company.
It's okay.
That we also did business with, since we have several different control systems throughout our schools. He was helpful there as well. But there are new rebates for LED lights. LED is light-emitting diodes. You've probably seen the most by the exit signs. That technology's been improving, and we're going to try a handful of light bulbs in the Pierce Auditorium, because John was in there for one of his kids' events, and of course, when you do that for a living, you look up at the lights and you think, "Can we make some changes in here to save some money?" I'm a taxpayer. This is my job, you know? So he couldn't wait to tell Bill and the rest of the committee that he thinks he's got an option for us, and we want to, we don't even have to change the ballast, just the bulbs. Ballast is kind of the system that holds the bulb in place. We're going to try a few bulbs in there and see if the light works the way it's supposed to. And I think we could go from sixty-some-odd kilowatt hours per bulb down to eight to twelve, depending on the size of the bulb. And it's those types of things that we've done in the gyms and in a few other places that make the difference. I mean, the schools are already, I don't want to say ahead of their time, but they're as current as you can be when we have the motion sensors and the lights go off when nobody's using them. I mean, I can tell you, it definitely happens to me in my office at times where I'm sitting in there, and I'm at my computer and not moving much, and the lights go off, and I have to wave my arms to get the light back on.
And I believe that the light bulbs cost about eighty dollars? Forty dollars of a rebate?
It's either maybe forty or sixty, depending on the bulbs. So, yeah, we could, so that makes the turnaround, the payback, in all likelihood, less than two years. And if you're ever going to invest any money for energy savings and preventive maintenance, two years or less is the official no-brainer of the industry standard, because a lot of things can take you ten, twelve years to get payback. Or, for example, if you were to do solar panels without any subsidy, it takes about twenty years to get payback on something that's got a twenty to twenty-five-year expected useful life. So the subsidy is great, and since everybody has that little payment, a little minimal charge in their electric bill, it's nice that, when available, we take advantage of those opportunities.
Great. And Mrs. Kelly has not, did you have another one? No, sorry, Mrs. Kelly?
I just had one question on the review of the proposals. So there's a qualification component.
Right.
Which there may be multiple people who qualify. Is that...
Sure.
And then after that, you would open up the prices associated with each of those proposals?
No, usually just the top three.
Okay.
You rank them. And it's very similar to hiring an architect or a engineer, where the quality of the person providing the service outweighs the initial cost, so that people don't run to the cost right away. You want to figure out who the best person is, and then you figure out whether or not the cost is going to be acceptable or prohibitive.
Okay, thank you.
I think we've also covered our Facility Subcommittee report on this as well tonight, so.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. That will all be up on mine, if citizens are interested. Briefly, I'd like to give a few highlights. This is March, celebrate visual arts and music in our schools, and there's no shortage of celebrations in the Milton Public Schools. In the area of music, there were two concerts last week. This week, a jazz concert, and the strings downstairs tonight in the auditorium. A band concert next Tuesday in the Milton High School Auditorium. Forty-three students were selected for Senior Semza this coming weekend, seven students selected for Allstate the following weekend, and one student selected for Eastern Division. So a huge celebration in the music department. In the visual arts department, we have some very exciting news. For the first time, James Gallagher, a grade twelve student, won a silver medal from the national level for the Solistic Art and Writing Awards. The first time that a student at Milton High has been recognized at the national level for their art. His photography, Lady Brittany, we'll be able to see. We have these Globe Solistic Art winners, their work is in town being shown. And so when the art comes back, we'll have all of them bring their art to the school committees and maybe have a little reception, so that everybody can enjoy the artwork. And I've recognized in my email blast, and will recognize on the web, all of the students that have been recognized by the Globe, Boston Globe's Solistic Art. And if you read the Globe last Sunday, you would have seen statewide those recognitions. Tonight, Mr. Phelan and I and Ms. Sheridan enjoyed the Grade Six Art Fair and ACE at the Pierce Library. Next Tuesday night, Grade Seven artwork, and the next Tuesday night, Grade Eight artwork. So the art teachers are having a different approach to the art fairs or the art shows at the Pierce this year. It was lovely, and as we left, there were lots of extended families coming in, and it was very exciting. This Saturday, our future problem solvers will travel to Marlborough, and the topic is water quality. They have fully researched this topic, and they're ready to compete at the state level. The Cunningham, Joshua Hackley, Serena Chen, Mackenzie Moore, and Audra Fugel, Colly Clatton, Samantha Rice, Jack Cullen, Abby Lang, and Dominic, excuse my pronunciation, Jess Seterno, the Tucker, Eva Chow, and August Cahale Derucci, and James Collins, and the Glover students, we were notified the other day, individuals who play, those are teams, Andrew Gray and Timothy Karaf, how about that, going out, and they'll sit, and they'll write their own response to the problem in the future problem solving, and they'll compete at the individual level. I want you to circle on your calendars, March 31st and April 1st. You remember that we've brought all our fundraising at the high school down to the golf and tennis in September, the Walk-a-thon last month, and now the Milton High School Faculty Talent Show. And here's the news. Mr. Phelan's son, he sang last time, he's going to dance and sing at this event. And so a lot of hidden talents on the staff of the Milton High School staff, two nights of the Faculty Talent Show.
What will you be doing?
Yes, Matt, what will you be doing?
I'm not exactly sure. Whatever I'm told. The biggest proponents, or whatever I'm told, they assign me to dance with somebody, but they're having a dance, one of those dance shows that you have on TV, but the person will lose that was with me, so we're negotiating. Circle on your calendars, April 2nd, very exciting, Milton Foundation for Education, Backyard Bash. There are rumors out there that the potty is outside. I want to put all those rumors to rest. The Backyard Bash is at the Quincy Marriott, and it's an inside potty. But through the decorations and all of the work of the parents and guardians of Milton Public School students, you're going to think you're outside. And they have lots and lots of surprises and a wonderful time planned. I want to recognize Patty Elliott, Astrid Hajar, and Lisa Viola. They have worked tirelessly with so many parents, we would be here for another hour, who have taken on the responsibility for this huge fundraiser for the MFE. And remember, the funds this year are going to the PTO, and the parents are deciding where the funds are going to be spent in each of the six schools. So very, very exciting news.
May I just say one thing about that, Ms. Gormly? Because you can order your tickets online at the Milton Foundation for Education website, which is also found as a link from the MiltonPS.org under our Partnership tab. It's really easy to do. That's how I bought my tickets. It's an easy way to do it, and it would help them greatly if you could buy your tickets.
And there's a little secret. They've already gone over three fifty, which is huge. So you'll know somebody at the event, and they're not going to sell tickets at the door, so we urge people to go online. And the raffle tickets for the event, two tickets to the Red Sox game, a limousine and a night at a hotel, are all available at your individual school offices.
Ms. Gormly, sorry, you're obviously not a Red Sox fan. You just said the Red Sox game. Opening day against the Yankees.
Oh, excuse me.
That makes people want to run out and buy those tickets.
Right. We're going to have exciting news about our consolidated facilities appointment. I'm going to leave that up to the Chair. We shared that we have appointed the Colly Clat principal, Janet Sheehan. We're still working on our SED Director, Administrator of Pupil Personnel. We'll report out at the next meeting on that appointment. It's known, not formalized, that our World Language, Foreign Language Coordinator, Gracie Burke, is going to retire. So we'll be looking forward to setting up that search committee. I've tried to get Ms. Burke not to retire, as I did Mr. Shields, and I was not successful. They are going to retire. And a fourth administrator in the Milton Public Schools has announced their retirement, and it's with mixed emotions that I want to share with the public that Dr. John Drother, the high school principal, is going to retire. And so he's, will have lots of opportunities to recognize his service as a teacher at the Cunningham Middle School, a math teacher, a phenomenon. If one more person comes up to me, who I think is my age, and says they had Mr. Drother, Dr. Drother is their math teacher. He was a math teacher, and the math department had a very successful, as I said, principal of a thriving and high rigor and standard American high school here at Milton High. And we're going to wish him well. And we're going, already I've had lots of parents who have contacted me. Cheryl McDermott, the PTO president, will be putting out an email blast and accepting names of parents, and then the PTO will work to select the three parents to sit on that screening committee. And then I go directly to the head of the union, and the high school will select three teachers to sit on the screening committee. I would ask for the upcoming World Language Director and the high school principal. I would go through the Chair to have a school committee member sit on each of those committees. And again, publicly, I want to acknowledge, when you do sit on the committee, you bring a strong point of view, and I appreciate your involvement in that. And we have administrators sitting on the committee. Again, in Milton, all of those positions were posted. We give the screening committee all of the applications. We have, over the years, known individuals who applied outside, and sometimes superintendents will screen the applications and give the screening committee five, and say, "Give me back three." We give every single application, and if anybody wants to bring a candidate in, we bring the candidate in, and the system works. Reporting out, we've had very successful meetings, Mr. Gillis, John Phelan, and myself with our PTO presidents, outstanding group of individuals. They give me outstanding feedback from the parents, both positive and negative, that we can use at central office. I, as a result of Mrs. Kelly suggesting last year, I meet with the heads four times a year of the site councils. That's been valuable. Last week, we met with the parents of the visual arts, and we are going to meet... Last week, we met with the parents of the visual arts and we are going to meet quarterly with them. The site councils, they asked for Mr. Pavlicek to come to be their resident expert on pilot and the use of land in Milton. So these individuals have topics that they want further research on. And last night, I met with the PAC, Special Ed Parents, who are the head of the Special Ed PAC. And I would watch my email blast, in your individual school email blast, the PAC has four, very exciting preschool meeting, meeting for preschool parents coming up, an elementary programming meeting coming up, an out of district and high school program meeting coming up, and the Fed Bill of Rights, Parents' Rights meeting coming up. So they have really a full schedule for the year and they're working hard.
Ms. Gormly, just in case anyone doesn't know what pilot stands for, it's payment in lieu of taxes, that the money, that's what you spoke to, right, Mr. Pavlicek?
Spring sports signup. Spring sports signup goes through Monday, March 21st. And 224 students as of today have signed up. Normally, it's 320 in our spring sports, so I'm looking for the last two days, hopefully, to have a huge turnout. Calls have gone out to all the parents. The three week look ahead at Milton High School and the Daily Bulletin every morning mentions, this is the week for spring signup. You can also go to the web. First grade, I'm very pleased to announce, we had a full program of putting first grade programs out there. And as of last Friday, I have to recognize John Phelan and Sean Walsh, who did unbelievable work with our school principals. We had one Colly Clatine parent volunteer to have their first grader go to the Cunningham. All first graders in English and French are in the school of their choice. All parents and guardians, first choice, home schools were able to have the assignments. Now we're going to be placing the children of families new to the district that have completed their registration packets. So I've brought tonight, per the committee's request, and I'll bring it every week and every meeting, but we'll send it out to you early, the current enrollment. And after we do, Mr. Phelan has an idea of having a deadline. Everybody who has a full packet will assign those students and then we'll, a month later, gather new registers, register, students who are registering and we'll make those assignments. So that's a number that's changing weekly. We have a huge number off the top of your head.
First grade only?
New registrations?
Twenty.
Twenty. Twenty new students new to the district that weren't, their families weren't in our public schools and they weren't in our kindergarten. So they have to be placed. I'd ask parents-
I'm sorry, Mrs. Kelly?
Sorry, before we move that, just so I understand, so everyone, including families whose kindergartner is their oldest, have been assigned to-
Yes.
Okay. So distinguishing factor is people totally new to the system?
Yes.
Quick question.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'd ask parents to check our website and their individual school websites for the MCAS schedules coming up. And at our next meeting, Mr. Phelan and his committee will report out on school choice for the school committee. Any questions, comments?
Mrs. Kelly?
Just, do you have the present class, first grade class sizes?
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry.
Yes. This, and to the committee's request, we keep this posted. After each school committee meeting, we repost an updated enrollment chart.
Oh, two pages?
Are that two pages?
No.
No.
Okay. Any other questions, Mrs. Kelly?
Just, I apologize. So this is reflective of next year's first grade?
No.
This is right now.
Oh, this is, yeah.
This is per year request.
Right.
Every school committee, I bring an updated enrollment chart and we post it.
Great. And I guess I was just wondering about what the present class sizes are of the-
For next year's?
Yeah, for the first grades.
I'll bring that on the 30th.
Okay.
Because we would have enrolled the students new that have complete registration packets. So to the 30th, I'll start my report with that and we'll put it up on the overhead.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Gormly? Okay, we'll move on to, thank you, Ms. Gormly, that was great. My report, I just have a quick update to our calendar. So because we rearranged our schedule for tonight's meeting and added some things to our agenda items, next meeting, we will have the Pierce Middle School Site Council and the school choice report, as Ms. Gormly just identified. And also, I would just like to speak briefly. I know Ms. Gormly mentioned all of the arts in our school month activities, but I had the pleasure of attending two concerts last week. One was the vocal concert from the high school and the middle school and the other was the jazz concert. And they were just amazing. If you liked the Beatles, you missed a great night of singing at the high school and middle school vocal concert. And the jazz concert, they actually had a special guest, Gabe Stillman, who's an alum from the jazz band, brought his college band, jazz band, and it was an amazing night of entertainment. The best $5 you could spend on entertainment around and I would highly suggest to anyone to attend any of those upcoming events. Also, outside of all of those concerts, they had a visual art display for each one. And again, just amazing, the talent of our students. So I wanted to say it's my privilege to attend those things, so thank you to all involved in making them such a success. We can move on to the finance subcommittee, Mrs. Kelly?
Well, you added two items to this, so I'm not, you may have more knowledge about these things than I do.
I think we voted that reduction list, so we don't have to revisit that again. The reduction list was already voted at the last meeting.
I think so. I don't think we added anything and I think what was said is that this is, this will move as, you know, things change. So really what the next vote on the budget will be, unless something dramatic changes, will be sort of the final result of the budgetary process.
Was there anything else?
There is mention of the revised management letter.
Right.
Which, I asked the administration to explain it just because I think you have better knowledge of it than I do.
This is a good news story. I'm going to defer to Mr. Gillis.
Yeah, as I think was reported in the Milton Times, it said that the school had over spent its budget by about $17,000 and that was not the case. We, the school departments used the same reports to track its expenditures all year and with the turnover of having an interim town accountant and then nobody there and then a new town accountant, some things seemed to get lost in the shuffle. And I believed the auditor was looking at an incorrect report where they were classifying some things to the general revenue fund that really weren't general revenues. The school had some rebates or credits for things that happened. One was a duplicate bill paid in error. Another was a rebate from a special education program because the student had left early and we had prepaid a little bit. Another one was the federal reimbursement rate for, I'm drawing a blank on it, the utility, the utilities, the long distance and the, what you call it, the internet connection. We get a rebate, we file through that. And so those become credits to our expenditure line items and that's the way we handled them in the past. But there seemed to be an error and I produced a documentation and sent it to the auditor who at least thankfully agreed with me and realized that we didn't overexpend our budget. They were just classifying revenues incorrectly. And so they retracted the comment. With any luck, it'll get the same play in the print media.
And, Mr. Gillis, we should recognize Town Hall working with us to get an amended management letter because we put a tremendous amount into work and you put a lot of work with your department into that closeout and Town Hall worked with us to have an amended letter.
Right. Both former interim accountant Eric Kinsheriff and current accountant Amy Dexter, who-
Amy Dexter deserves credit.
You know, she came into this for an audit where she had done none of the work and is still doing a good job getting up to speed on all the changes in the municipal side from the private sector side. They were both helpful in helping resolve this issue.
She really, Amy Dexter really extended herself to the school system and I want to thank her and recognize her and Mr. Gillis for correcting that. That's a good news story for the school system.
Great. Thank you. Consolidated facilities, well, let me just tell you, after about two and a half years of process, Mr. Hubien and I sat on that committee for about two and a half years. It was a townwide venture with citizens and members of the Board of Selectmen. We received 72 applicants, as we said a few weeks ago, for the position of a consolidated facilities director and whittled it down to four finalists, five finalists. And of those five, Mr. Bill Ritchie was appointed this past week as our new townwide consolidated facilities director. The final committee of, I'm sorry, there were five people in the committee, there were three finalists. It was Ms. Gormly and Dennis Cohane representing the school committee. It was John Michael Shields representing the Board of Selectmen. It was Kevin Mern, also for the Board of Selectmen, and Tony Caccello. Thank you. And Tony's done an amazing job over this, during this time, in organizing and orchestrating and really working to move this forward. And it's been a privilege to work and serve on this committee and we're pleased that it's Bill. The words that were spoken, I can't really speak for the people that were there, but the, I was present that night. Ms. Gormly did a really nice job speaking to all the attributes and the qualities and the strengths that Mr. Ritchie brings to this position. Obviously, he knows these buildings. We're the majority of the town in terms of buildings and he brings a huge wealth of information and will be able to hit the ground running in terms of taking on this new opportunity. So when they approved or when they voted to recommend him going forward, it was with the caveat that they could reach and, you know, negotiate a contract and have a successful vote of approval by the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. So do, I would entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Bill Ritchie to be the, I'm sorry, to be the consolidated facilities director. It would just be our vote.
So moved?
Second. So it was moved by Mr. Cohane and seconded by Ms. Bagley Jones. Do we have any discussion about this? Questions, comments?
So this is the nomination or it's the appointment?
The appointment. Did I say nomination? Sorry. Dennis, you were part of the final interview committee. Would you like to speak to it at all, or Ms. Gormly? Dennis?
As I said in the last Monday night, this is my first year on the school committee and I didn't know Mr. Ritchie that well during the year, but I got to know him slowly. And I did mention that, you know, I've been on this roof, I've been on the Glover roof with him. He's a boots-on-the-ground kind of a guy. He's the, to me, he was the perfect candidate because not only does he have experience in the office and running employees, he also had this, he had the skill set of showing up at job sites or schools wherever he was needed and participating in fixing a problem. And to me, that was essential in choosing him to run the whole town buildings. It was an easy, it was an easy vote for me. I was ready to go the first night, but I can see how, you know, he has to answer to Mary and he has to answer to Kevin Mern and they had to be absolutely sure. He's not going to have to answer to me. So they had to be absolutely sure and that's the reason we went back last Monday night and I was delighted that it was unanimous. I think we made the right choice.
Ms. Gormly, do you have anything to add?
Well, thank you, Mr. Cohane. I said, Mr. Ritchie knows the Milton Public School buildings and he knows the facilities and he, the learning curve will be decreased because he will learn the other town buildings. And also, I believe that he has the skill set and he's proven it over the years through the school building project to bring all of the town department heads together. Again, this is a huge issue. Will all of the department heads, will all of the departments come together to make this work and to maximize the dollars? And I believe that Mr. Ritchie has the skills. We've already been contacted through the process by a few of the department heads who were very supportive of his candidacy. Kevin Mern, Tony Caccello and I are going to sit down. Obviously, there, I said the other night, I learned a tremendous amount through this process. There's no one person, when you hire a teacher, you know the skill set. And in your professions, you know the skill set. But there aren't individuals out there who have really taken on these jobs in towns, overseeing the school property and the town property. And you have to be a facilities expert, you have to be a facilities management, you have to know capital planning, you have to have the interpersonal skills, you have to be able to build consensus. And so, again, it's going to be a job, a position that is new. And I think the most powerful remark of all of these two and a half years, we have an investment in these properties. And anyone who's in a leadership position in the town, elected or appointed, has a responsibility to come up with a plan that will ensure that these buildings stay in the condition they are now, come up with a plan for short and long-term maintenance because we, I say all the time in the office, we are the most fortunate residents in the state of Massachusetts to have six new, newer renovated to new schools, the new library, the council on aging, and looking towards other construction projects in the town. We have a huge responsibility and I want to publicly recognize Tony Caccello. He was a man with a vision and he came up with this idea. He brought people together around it. And Mr. Hubien, I have to say that he publicly recognized and I too saw that when the process stopped, because it was a really new process, bringing the town and the schools together and it stalled and it looked like it wasn't going to work, you came up with the ideas and you were the individual that brought everyone together to compromise and keep it moving. It would have stopped without you on that committee and we would have never seen it to this end and all of that work would have been for now. So I want to recognize you for that. Again, you kept everybody in the process, working together and coming to compromise and coming to yes. So it's, it's good for the town and for the future of the town and we're all gone and moved on and these buildings are servicing children and teachers and they're in, they've been properly maintained to maximize really the funds from the state and the taxpayers' dollar. It's a wonderful news story for the town.
Thank you, Ms. Gormly.
I feel pretty passionate about this one.
It's a huge opportunity for Milton, I think, to break down the silos that have been present politically for such a long time that perhaps prevented the town from gaining efficiencies. And hopefully, this department will help lead the way, not only with buildings, but then move to other things as well. And I think it's great that Bill Ritchie is the man leading the charge. I think he's proved himself to be someone always looking for innovation. I think coupled up with Matt in that regard, I think we are well-served in terms of keeping and maintaining our buildings efficiently over the years to come. So I think it's a great appointment. Thank you for everyone who worked on it.
I have to give a little inside baseball story. I was pretty protective about the schools and felt this responsibility and so, you know, to the point of, we have a tremendous amount of square footage in the schools and Bill Ritchie knows our buildings and works with all of the contractors. And I said, he might not live in the town, but he's 24/7 in the town. And he will learn all of the other buildings and the properties and work with the leaders in the town to come up with a capital plan and work to- in the town to come up with a capital plan and work to come up with short and long-term plans to fund the capital needs.
And just one final thing. In the process of this, of the interview, actually, Mrs. Kelly, you reminded me of this, we learned that he already sits on five committees in the town, town-wide committees, representing the schools. And I didn't know that, you know? So, he already has a connection with a lot of the people that he'll be working closely with, so. So, we have a motion, excuse me, a second. Are there any further comments? All in favor? Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Bagley Jones, could we have health and wellness, please?